Well, I'll call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Scoog.
President.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm still here.
Councilmember Mallory.
I'm here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Nye.
I'm happily here.
And Councilmember Whiting.
I'm here, thank you.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Item number three, discussion, Bob Edwards Park. Brian?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Surprisingly enough, we're discussing a topic stemming all the way back from 2007. And this is Bob Edwards Park. Rightfully named after former Councilmember Bob Edwards, who had a vision and great support for youth athletics and endeavors. These plans were shelved unfortunately due to insufficient development impact fees back in that day. However, back in early or mid-May of this year, Council approved a new professional services agreement with Civil Tech, and we began the update of those designs. And they are also providing some construction or oversight services. Now, the new park itself, as pictured, will include a lighted natural turf athletic field, walking paths, restrooms, trees and landscaping, irrigation, asphalt pavement, parking with lights, all those necessary goodies that are found within a park. The town plans to purchase under separate contracts the athletic field lighting itself and a restroom, as well as we'll also need to be bringing utility services. That would be electrical with APS, as well as also some updates and enhancements as it relates to our water services that were discovered since that point in time back in 2008, when the original plans were developed. We were very fortunate, we had three quality bids that were submitted. Our low bid estimate came in from CSCLM Earthmovers with a total bid of $1.2 million. Very competitive bids is the range between the two was roughly about $180,000. So we're very excited and happy to have that. Unfortunately, as we went through those bids and that processes, we were also very cognizant of the fact that our development impact fee study listed Bob Edwards Park with an estimated amount of $1.8 million, making available to that project as a whole. Currently, we have roughly about $40,000 spent on engineering, as well as an additional $65,000 that's spent on town permit fees that happened in last fiscal year. So in doing so, in review of the bids, we had to do some value engineering. And there are a couple of components that we're recommending not moving forward as part of the owner supply processes, and that is unfortunately our playground, as well as our Ramada. So we're being very constructive in regards to our funding processes and sources. Staff will have more of a display of those coming up in its action items in next Council's review of the project, and being able to present those. But those in total are reducing the contract amount of approximately about $90,000, as well as not venturing into those other two owner-provide items, so the playground and the Ramada. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to the project and the pending upcoming presentation that'll happen next Thursday.
Questions, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Yeah.
You know, I just, on the picture you had up here, does that designate where the lighting would be going? I don't know.
Athletic field lighting, basically if you can look at the outside four corners, roughly those four corners will relate to the athletic field lighting. The parking lot lighting will be limited to the parking lot itself. So those will be the lighting features that'll be taking place. Part of that value engineering was the removal of the bollard lighting along the pathway.
Marty?
Yeah, I have a question. The athletic field, will that be a basketball court or something other than that?
The athletic field down below will be a combination of football soccer, and it'll be entirely natural turfed. If you look at the illustration, you will see the surrounding sidewalk around the perimeter, that entire basin will be grass. So it'll be the athletic field as well as the slopes, so it'll make for an outstanding spectator enjoyment area through that.
And there's also gonna be a walking path around?
Yes. This will be a concrete walking path around the entire upper perimeter of the park.
Are there gonna be exercise, you know, stations like they have at Mountain Valley?
Fortunately, we are not able to add that into this design, but there will be viewing benches scattered throughout that walking path.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Harvey.
Laura.
We're going minimal because of our financial constraints, but that doesn't mean we can't add to it in the future.
Correct. And that will be one of the staff recommendations that in future fiscal years, that we would be able to bring back those elements that we're unable to move forward with currently right now. The great part about the two elements that we are able to move forward, one being the lighting system, it is bringing the newest technologies into play, as well as the best shielding for dark sky compliance processes, and it totally integrates with our system that we have at Mountain Valley Park on the fourplex and the synthetic fields. So this will be an LED system, which is a great thing because it reduces our development costs, because we're able to go from three-phase down to one-phase power supply sources, as well as then the long-term operating repair and replacement costs on those LED fixtures, too. So it's a win-win all the way around there.
Right. So based on what you're saying, not only will it be dark sky compliant, but it'll be sensitive to those neighbors.
Very, very much so.
And that's very important for us to factor that in.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions, anyone?
I just, I like the location. I like the fact that it's near our, what we call our downtown area. It's bringing people closer in to that area where the movie theater is and things like that. So I really like the location. And do we, are we gonna do tournaments there eventually, or how will that be?
Yes, ma'am. It should definitely be part of that inventory or schedule, if you will, of services that are out there. I fully see it being utilized, especially when it comes to the soccer tournaments that we've hosted in past years. So it'll be a huge element of that, especially because it's lit.
Awesome. Great, thank you, Mary.
Question, Rick?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Bring it back to us.
All right, thank you, sir.
Job. Okay, we'll go on then to number four, discussion, part-time employee leave benefit policy. Karen?
Good evening, everybody. Let me pull this out here for... All right. Wanted to remind us first of all, that back in September of 2012, Obamacare mandated that anyone who works 30 hours or more be considered full-time. So at that point in time, we did have several employees that were working part-time, more than 30 hours, but less than 40. And so we reclassified them as we were required to do as full-time, and they have received the privilege of all full-time benefits since that point in time. So what that means this evening in our discussion, or for your consideration, is that individuals, whether they work 30, 35, or 40 hours, currently receive the same amount of benefit for their general leave and their holiday time. It's a fixed rate for all full-time employees. However, for our part-time employees, we prorate it. So we have individuals that work anywhere from 20 to 28 hours, and based on their weekly schedule, their general leave and holiday benefits are prorated based on that weekly schedule. What's in front of you to consider is we are proposing that we also make that a fixed benefit rate, just like we do for full-time staff. So regardless of how many hours you work, it is simply based on your classification of part-time or full-time. With our part-time employees, we only have 15, so there isn't much impact. The cost that we're talking about is approximately $3,000. That would give nine of those individuals additional accruals. So instead of four hours of holiday, for example, they'll get five hours of holiday pay in some cases. Three have no impact. And then there are three other part-time employees who accrue something more than what we're proposing. And so we would give them an increase in salary, which is six cents an hour to 10 cents an hour, to compensate them for that difference. So they would get it in pay rather than time, and it's very, very small in an impact as far as that goes. We believe not only is that a good practice, so that whether you're part-time or full-time, all are receiving the same benefit. It aligns our part-time with our full-time in how we administer that, as well as relieve administrative difficulties. Right now, we have over 80 pay codes to handle the part-timers because of the variances in schedules, and we have different accrual rates for each year of service for the first to 10 years of service. So it makes it quite complicated, and this would alleviate that, as well as align our part-time with our full-time staff. So in front of you then are two policies that would be impacted, both the general leave, which is 2-08, and the holiday, which is 2-09. And simply is changing the accrual schedule to reflect that change, as well as then in holidays, going from four hours to five-hour impact. So questions, comments, concerns?
Questions, anyone?
And...
Mary, go ahead.
And the reason that we're doing this is just basically because of all of the different codes that you have, or this is just a simpler process?
It's a simpler process, and the real driver behind it and why I've asked that we consider this is simply because of the fairness between our part-time and our full-time employees. Employees who work 30 hours a week receive the same benefit as those working 40 hours a week. So I feel that it would be more consistent to give a 22-hour person the same benefit we give a 25-hour person.
Okay. Thank you.
Laura?
Well, I'm pleased to see this because we value our part-time employees, and we want them to have these concrete evidence of that. Now, we're going to treat them equitably and well, so I'm pleased to see this.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else, Karen?
No, that's it, till I come back and tell you about all the wonderful things HR's been doing the last year. But that's it on this.
Good.
Thank you.
Can you bring this back to us, Karen?
I will, I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go on to number five, presentation, town clerk business license, June Katanzarite, records management, Mandy Garfield. Who's first, June?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yep. Okay, so I'm here to give you an update and tell you everything you ever want to know about business licenses. So I'm gonna start with a little history. You probably haven't had that before. The business licenses began in the town shortly after the town. In 1979, they adopted Chapter 8 of the Town Code with Ordinance 8 and Resolution 27. And they adopted a fee at that time at $20 a year. And over the years, they gradually increased that fee from 30, then to 45, and that's where it is right now. It's still at 45, along with an application fee or an inspection fee, depending on the type of license. So I did a little research, too. I thought it'd be fun to find some of the businesses that are here, that were here when we started, and they're still here. So I found three that you might be interested in, and one of them is the Prescott Valley Motel, which I think was about the first thing ever built in Prescott Valley. I found that it was built in 1969, and it has changed ownership several times, but it's still here and operating. The second one is our Safeway store, which was originally built on the other side of 69, where the Prescott newspaper offices are now. And that was in 1977. And then in 1987, they moved across the street to where they are now. And the other old business that I found, which is the Shadow Mountain Mobile Home Park, which is over by Denny's, it's recently changed its name to North Ridge Mobile Home Park, but I found an old license in their file from 1980. So they've been around a long time, too. So I just thought you'd enjoy hearing about those businesses. So then I also, before I get into all the numbers, I just wanted to give you a little education, too, about the licensing requirements in that Chapter 8 of Town Code. Because all businesses of any kind that conduct business in the town are required to have a license. And they don't have to be based in town, but if they're doing business here in town, they need to get a license. And just wanted to also tell you that each business needs a license on its own. Like if there are two or three businesses in one building, they all need their own license, even though they're sharing space. One license doesn't cover them, so... And another example of a business that might have a lot of licenses are the banks in town. They have several locations, they have standalone buildings, or they're inside a grocery store. So they all have a separate license because they're based on that location where they are. And another fun one that you see a lot of is the movie rental kiosks around the, all the different places like Walmart or CVS, or they're all over town, and they all have to have a separate license because they're all at a different location. They all come up for renewal at different times, depending on when they got their license. So I won't bore you too much more with that. Basically, you know, we have commercial business, we have home-based business, and we have out-of-town businesses and commercial rental licenses for landlords. Commercial businesses need a building inspector to come out and do an inspection before we issue that license. And home-based businesses also get a zoning review before we issue those licenses. And just wanted to tell you that all our information is online, and our forms are available at our website. One other thing we do that we've done since 2008 is we have to comply with Arizona Legal Workers Act. We do need to verify that people have legal presence in the U.S. under federal law. So we have a form that we use for that, for our licensees. It applies to people who are individual owners, people who have corporations or LLCs of some type have already proved their presence and don't have to prove it to us again. Okay, so now I'm gonna give you some numbers. I hope it don't take too much, but as, I'm gonna give you numbers as of the end of our fiscal year. And we're a total of 2,726 active licenses for all types. And the total revenue collected was $157,621, which is about a 3% increase over the last fiscal year, about $4,000 more. And let me give you some other numbers that we issued, 578 new licenses in 1516, and we renewed 2176. And that may sound like a lot, because even though we didn't have maybe 578 new businesses, we had new licenses because of the reason they needed to get one. Either they moved, or they got a new owner. And so those numbers always come out with a net. So we only had a gain in 1516 over 1415 of 122 licenses. So, hope that makes sense. The other big thing we do is issue special event licenses, and I'll go into those more later, too, but we did do 824 of them last year, and 797 the year before. So it's not a big difference, but I'll tell you later about what we used to do. So I'm just gonna also give you a breakdown of those 2,700 licenses by category. I'm not gonna give you all of them, but I'll just highlight them. There were 227 retail store licenses, 127 health services licenses, which includes doctors and health clinics and health clubs, anything to do with health. There were 29 restaurants that serve liquor, and 50 restaurants that don't serve liquor. 112 service businesses, 45 nail and hair salons, they're all in one group, 43 automotive services, and 34 manufacturers. And I'll skip onto some of these others. Our out-of-town licenses are 187. We have 10 vehicle dealerships and eight daycare centers. And those are all like the commercial businesses. So with, but then we have our home businesses, and right now we have 325 of them. And that doesn't include the contractors. They have a separate contracting license, and right now there are 144 contractors based in Prescott Valley. About half of them are home, and the other half are commercial. And with, going on to contractors, they are our biggest group of out-of-town contractors. They number 670 contractors, and they bring in about $32,000 in revenue a year with their business licenses. And I looked back, and that sounds like a high number, but actually in the last few years, in 2014, we had 611, and in 2010, we had 590. I tried to look up some other years back from the recession, but those numbers aren't available anymore. We purged our records after five years, and it's kinda hard to get reports out to give us any of those kinda numbers, but... So the other thing I wanted to add about numbers is, I thought you might be interested to know, that we have three adult group homes that are currently licensed in the town, and 12 home-directed assisted living homes. Okay, and one other category is our liquor licenses. We have about $20,000 a year in revenue from liquor licensing, because they charge a little more. The average is 150 to 375 a year for a liquor license, depending on their series that they have with the state. So I'll break that 72 down into 29 restaurants, nine bars, two beer and wine licenses, two microbreweries, 13 beer and wine stores, 11 liquor stores, and those include places like Safeway, Fries, and Walmart. Those are considered liquor stores as well. Three club licenses, like the Elks Club, and three wholesalers. So that's our total. And then one other thing I wanted to talk about was our special events, because it takes a lot of our time at the town clerk's office during what we call special event season. Said we did over 800 of them last year, and they keep us quite busy. The number has really grown since they built the event center, and because, like I said, we did 800 last year, and I looked back in 2006, 10 years ago, we only did 100. So that's really made a difference in how busy we get with our events. We have one coming up right now, at the first weekend of August, is the Prescott Gem and Mineral Club Show. They're here for their fourth year, and they really enjoy coming to our arena. They previously had it in Prescott. So, of course, you know, we have a lot of those events, and we really enjoy having them in town. They really bring a lot of other people to town who use a lot of, you know, other things besides wherever the event is. They, you know, frequent our restaurants and our hotels and all the, you know, just come and enjoy Prescott Valley, and, you know, they're really important for us. They, I didn't mention that the people who get those licenses, they're just a temporary license for that event, and that way they don't have to buy a whole annual license. So looking to the future, the town clerk's office wants to add more online services and to use the web to process applications and payments and renewals, and eventually be able to let people print their own licenses and use email to communicate more with them. So just wanted to also say that we've had this license fee for 26 years, and wanted to think about where else have you gone in 26 years that you can have the exact same price that you paid for something 26 years ago? So people are really getting a bargain on a business license, so... Thank you. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Mike?
I was curious on special events, is that a different rate as opposed to the annual fee?
Yeah, it's a $15 fee, Mike.
$15?
Yeah, and so they pay that, rather than having to pay the annual fee.
Right. And you mentioned homes, you know, I think there is two categories. Are those considered the same kind that are being impacted by, I guess, this new state legislation and the homes that they have in Prescott that are group homes and things like that? Are they considered in that number?
With the group homes, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, the people that have come to us, I believe, have also gotten some sort of state license, and I'm not sure what other licenses they're required, but they fall under those same...
So we have about 15 then in total, and...
Yeah, including the assisted living.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Marty?
Yeah. If someone rents out their home on a temporary basis, do they need to get some sort of a business license?
Not at this time, no. We don't have any licenses for that, for renting out their homes.
Other question, Mary?
You know, I'm always amazed, June, with the information, you know, that you've given from the time that the town kind of started. And I came across some information, and back in 1978, you guys had a population of about 1,521 people. And today, we are at like 45,000.
That sounds right.
And we're still dealing with fees and keeping our costs down. And so, you know, I think, I just love this town. I think it's amazing. Do a great job.
Other questions, comments? It's working okay, is it?
Yeah.
Keep us posted, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, June. Okay, Mandy?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. This piece of the presentation I'm doing tonight is on records management. The state recently updated records retention schedules, and you all know this because they come before council for approval. We, a meeting or two ago, had risk management, and then a couple meetings before that, we had nine schedules that came before you. And we've been promised by the state that we have several more revisions coming our way to look forward to. For example, the content, the format is changing, and the retention period in some cases. The one that impacts us quite a bit, right now at least, is the council packets. And the retention period was five years on those, and now they are permanent. So you know how thick those council packets can be. So we're thinking, you know, we're keeping these boxes now permanently, so that's just something we're keeping in mind in our record center as we go along. So as the retention schedules come back to us, we make those changes in-house, and also in our Laserfish system, which is our software that houses the electronic records, and they're accessible to employees, made available that way. Also along the lines of Laserfish, we have recently upgraded the system. We're running on its newest version, which is going great. We are getting into the busy season for me in the records management area, because it is the end of the fiscal year, so it's natural. Departments around town are boxing up their records and bringing them down to be stored in the record center. At that same time, I am boxing up records and that are ready for, to be purged and destroyed, boxing those up to get them out of the record center to make room for all the new ones that are coming in. So it's a little bit of a dance, and that happens between July and October usually. Finance does tend to hang on to their records until maybe closer to when their audit is finished. So July through October, that's when we do that, and the last couple of years, I've done the destruction in October. So, and as far as numbers coming in and going out, I'll get down to the specific numbers, but it's kind of a wash. We are taking in as many right now as we're pushing out for purging. So right now, it's, the trend has been, we've been okay, we're getting close to capacity. So as long as the trend stays on, we're gonna be just kinda hovering right at capacity for the record center. We're getting very, very close to full. Let's see, what else? This year, I am looking forward to transferring some of our permanent records to off-site storage at... storage at the State Library in Phoenix.
That's nice.
These are records of permanent retention which have been scanned and microfilmed according to the state standards. Doing this, putting them in off-site storage frees up space in our record center and for records that are more migratory, that come and go on a smaller retention schedule and that will alleviate a little bit of the pressure that we're feeling on space-wise in the record center. So as far as numbers, for fiscal year 1516 that we just ended, the records destruction was completed in October of 2015 and we destroyed 225 boxes. And if anybody wants to know linear feet, there's about one foot per box, so 225 linear feet. In fiscal year 1617 upcoming, we're looking at approximately, probably about the same, 225 boxes. So that's what we have upcoming. And, oh, I made a little note, we had 99 records requests for this last fiscal year that we fulfilled as well. That's all I have tonight. You have any questions?
Questions, anyone? Mary?
No, sir. Thank you.
Oh, you said the council packets have to be stored for evermore or less?
Yes, permanently.
When is that? Was that a new law or?
It is on the new retention schedule that just came out. We just did it a couple of months ago. It would have been probably May or June.
Who makes those retention schedules?
At the state, the state library.
State library?
Yeah. So, and they disseminate those to all the municipalities and the state and schools and agencies and?
They love rules and regulations, don't they?
Correct.
Larry?
Yeah, and I just, for clarification from Mandy, I think what that means is that you all have to keep every one of your agenda packets at your house forever. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Bologna.
I was going to say.
Mayor and Council, if I may speak to that as well. That was a long hairball discretion that we did have with the state library and it went up before all of the town and city clerks across the state and there were pro and con opinions on whether that should happen or not and the ultimate decision was made by the director and she said, "You will keep them all permanently." And so we have no choice about that and, you know, some of our packets are like this thick if we were putting them out in paper, but we have to keep them regardless. So that is going to really impact the record center and some of the room that is quickly disappearing.
Any other comments, Laura?
I bet some lawyers were involved in forcing that, but Mandy, you have job security.
Oh, yes.
Mike?
Yeah, just wondering, when we take our files down to the state, do they charge for a fee for the storage?
There is a small storage fee, yes.
There is?
Yes. And I can't remember it off the top of my head, 30 cents?
30 cents per box.
30 cents per box.
Per year.
So it's a revenue stream for the state?
So, you know, if we send four boxes down, well, that's not a whole lot, but if we're going to talk about 1,000 boxes, that's still not a real whole lot, but it beats building a new record center.
It does, 30 cents a box you can store stuff instead of spending a couple million dollars for books.
That was my point.
I think some bureaucrat is becoming as idiotic as some of our legislators. Any other comments?
I wonder, I wonder if it's since the state library that's requiring us to keep these, if Stuart would provide us with room to store all of it.
[laughing]
I wouldn't want to be in your shoes coming up later, Stuart. Okay.
Well, I know there's this room right above us here that might work.
Could be. On the fourth floor?
Third floor. Fourth floor.
Any other comments? Mandy? I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we go on into presentation, social media overview. Heidi Foster, Heidi, welcome.
I'm feeling so social.
Do I have to use the microphone, Heidi?
I'm feeling very social.
Go ahead.
Hello. Just going to give you a quick update tonight on our social media and so when I came on board in October 13, our Facebook page was being ably run by the very busy deputy town manager, Ryan Judy. And so as social media was just catching on for government at that time, we continued to add content from the town. Today, our Facebook page has community-wide respect as the go-to place to find out what's going on in town activities. And the really nice thing about the social media that I've enjoyed is that when we used to have to depend on the newspaper solely for our announcements and our news, we didn't really have any place else to go and so they had limited space and sometimes limited time and that limited what we were able to get out without paying money actually to advertise. So the social media has opened up a whole new avenue to really get town news out to the public. We set out to grow the social media presence because according to Pew Research, roughly 2/3 of U.S. adults use the site Facebook and half of those users get news there, amounting to 30% of the general population. So it's a very useful tool for us. We argue about that. In January 2014, we had reached 2,242 likes on our page. Today, we have nearly 8,900 on the page. So our next goal is 10,000. These numbers give us a wide platform to advertise town news and activities as well as recruit for job openings and just, you know, just pretty much the sky's the limit. While the most popular posts, this is kind of amazing, include our local wildlife, new business announcements, and weather is a big one, the large number of followers gives us a large platform for important alerts should an emergency arise or should we need to get some really super important news out to our public. It's a great venue for that. Just a couple of kind of fun facts, our July 4 fireworks photos had more than 11,000 views on Facebook. Photos of our hotshot memorial gave nearly 36,400 views and believe it or not, a June post and photo of a group of baby quail had more than 117,000 views.
Oh, my gosh.
So, people love good news and that's what it is and so hence the new businesses and the wildlife. People love to hear about their town and all the good things that are going on here. And so when people have these kind of posts, they share them with their families in other places and our posts get sent all over, basically all over the world. And so that's kind of an exciting thing, it's that people will share those and we often hear from people in other places who will comment on the posts and say, "Oh, man, I wish I was there. I live, you know, in New York now and the snow's eight feet high and you guys are, you know, 70 degrees." So it's just kind of fun to see all those. In mid-2014, we started a police department Facebook page, which generally shares the good things our law enforcement personnel are doing and also posts alerts when the police seek the community's help to solve crimes, along with safety information, scam alerts and other educational items. And so the police department has now taken over that page and that has almost 2,800 followers and it's growing and there are two really able PIOs over there who are putting content on that quite often, so mostly daily. And so that's getting to be a popular page for people to find safety and information and other things about crime and just different things in their community that relate to the police department. But above all, it's just a wonderful place for people to see what our officers are doing besides, you know, fighting crime. You know, they're out there doing a lot of community things as well. One popular recent police post was a warning from ADOT about the new Pokemon Go game and distracted driving. And so that was, that was kind of interesting because people were driving into trees and not in our community thankfully, but they were getting a few calls about suspicious-looking people walking around in the lot next door.
There's something right here, right now.
Right now. So if you see kind of funny-looking people walking around or people walking around looking funny, then that could be it. So we've made good use of photos on our pages. Photos are particularly popular as are videos. We want to get into a lot more video work. Ryan Judy, again, myself and volunteers Chris Kissling, who is a VIP with the police department, and Danny Kartichak, who works out of my office in Parks and Rec, have helped provide great photos for our Facebook pages. And like I said, we also have really good success with short videos, so we plan to do some short safety videos soon with the police department. And again, the sky's the limit with that because they have a lot of safety messages and video will make really good impact with those. Both the town and Prescott Valley and the police department have Twitter pages. Those are used in the same way, although these posts can only be 140 characters. So generally, we've found that the best way to deal with that is to put a photo up, to grab people's attention and link it back to our website where we'll put the story or the information on our website. So when they go into Twitter and they see something they really like, they just click on it and goes right to our website. Facebook and Twitter are the two most used social media platforms right now and so in the interest of doing a couple of things well, rather than hitting a lot of venues haphazardly, we haven't ventured into a lot of other platforms yet. However, if the majority of people shift to another venue, then we'll get our town news out that way. In addition to the town, the library has a Facebook page where they post library news and we also pick up some of those items to put on the Prescott Valley page and so their page has 700 followers at the time. We've also developed other avenues beyond our town social media pages that allow us to get news out to the public and these include two public Prescott Valley Facebook group pages that we don't run, but we are able to post our news on. And so that's been pretty successful. And so the last thing tonight, and I'm excited about this because, because of the whole public records thing, social media is subject to the same public records laws as other town communications, but in government, records-keeping was generally behind the times in social media and so we've been, you know, Diana and I have talked about this and Ryan Judy and I, over the last couple of years and we knew that we had to do something, so we, with the town, and this has also come before you in the budget process, but we've now contracted with Archive Social. And so we used to keep everything and we still do, everything we post according to our records law, but if somebody gets asked for a public records request on social media, they want all of the replies, they want all of the comments, they want all the metadata, everything that has to do with that post. And the only way to keep that is for that to be professionally archived. So now we have that service, all of our social media is now archived and in the event of a public records request, we can retrieve that information and everything that goes with it in a really timely manner. So that's a big relief. So we're growing, we're using social media for our town news. I'm pretty excited about, you know, being able to get the news out in so many different venues, so. Any questions?
Questions, Laura?
I'm relieved because it is the medium of choice out there and it sounds to me like you're doing a great job of keeping current and even trying to stay ahead of the curve and I think that's really important for us to understand the trends so that we can reach out to the diverse members of our community.
There's a lot out there and we will continue to keep up on what's going on.
Good. Marty?
Yeah, I think you're doing a great job with the social media. I mean, I go on the Facebook page, you know, pretty much every day, probably every hour, but yeah, I go on the, I'm on the internet fairly often, either on my phone or at home. And what's really nice is we have some really good photographers, including you and Ryan and Chris, and it's real easy to grab a picture and send it to a friend or relative on their Facebook page and go na 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 na, kind of stuff, you know, so.
Are you proud of your town?
Yes, I am very proud of this town.
Thank you, Marty. Mary?
You know, I just, I know all the work that you do with all of the assigned projects we have here in the town, but then of course, what you do on Facebook, also with the healing field and all of the pictures and everything and now you're out there, so I so appreciate that and you do a fabulous job with everything that you do. I was thinking though in the beginning, when you first started off on who was taking care of the Facebook, you know, I thought you were going to say it was Larry.
Oh, because he's into it, let me tell you.
I know, you know, I really believe that, I do, you know. Thank you, Heidi.
You're welcome.
No, nothing. Larry, did you have a comment?
None.
Put it on, you'll have to put it on Facebook if you do.
Anybody else?
I finally got him to look at it, though. Okay, thank you so much.
Heidi, I think everyone thinks you're doing a great job, so just.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Okay, next one, presentation, Human Resources. Karen, you're back up. Welcome back.
Well, as I was trying to think about how I could tell you what all Human Resources has been doing in the last year in a more unique and fresh manner, I asked staff to help me with some numbers. And so as I looked at all that information, even my staff, of which we have three of us as full-time and one part-time, they were like, "Holy cow, no wonder we're so busy," kind of thing. But the information really broke out into two halves that I want to share with you tonight in brief and that's what we do for our external customers through recruitment primarily and then internal customers, of course, our employees. Recruitment continues to be a dominating factor in Human Resources and the work that we do. As you know, three years ago, we experienced our highest turnover rate ever at almost 22%. I'm glad to tell you that we finished last year, again, for the second year in a row at a reduced rate, that we went, we currently have a turnover rate of just 15%, just. Larry and I were talking about that earlier today and I told him I don't think that we're ever going to see single digits, but he would like that, so we'll continue to plug along. I do want to thank Council for, I think, your support the last two, three years has meant so much to staff and that has had an impact on turnover, I'm convinced of that and I know that to be true. But in our budget book, we do look at a three-year window and with that three-year window, some numbers that you might not realize that I think will tell you how busy Human Resources is in the area of recruitment, is that we have had 116 people leave our organization in the last three years and we average 208 full-time, part-time employees. So that's why recruitment does continue to keep us very busy. This past year, we have, we lost 32 individuals in the last fiscal year, but that 116 people that have left us in three years, that still is causing a direct impact to our workloads presently and through last year, of course, because they're still learning their positions, performance management, new people on our teams with employee relations issues, training and development, all of these things because 56% of our staff, full-time, part-time staff, have been here three years or less. And so that causes all of us in the departments and Human Resources to invest a lot of energy into making them successful as they've joined our organization. Of that 116, 41 individuals were from the police department alone in the last three years. Last year, they ended the year with 85 full-time equivalent FTEs and so that again is a big number. I was over at the police department a couple of weeks ago and then I said, "You know, we need to do something with the new employees that you're hiring and make sure that you make them feel welcome." And the comment back was, "They're all new." They can really feel it and when you see that number of 41 new in the last three years in a department of now 97 individuals, it is high. Yet, they do not have the highest turnover from the last three years. We have four other departments who have even higher turnover from the last three years and that included the magistrate court, management services, library and community development. So you can see that that really has had an impact in us providing services from Human Resources to those departments and to those new employees. Additionally, in recruitment, just last year, we conducted 148 background investigations and so on 148 people, we collected information, coordinated the information, communicated with the individuals involved with that. It included 58 volunteers, 34 police officers. We didn't hire 34, but we did 34 backgrounds and I know that was only what PD passed on to us. They have about a 50% washout rate before it even gets to us, so that was a lot of work. Throughout the year, last year, we had 62 requests to open recruitment, what we call requisitions. Throughout the year last year, we had 62 requests to open recruitment, what we call requisitions. With those 62 requisitions, we were at multiple job fairs. We went out to colleges and talked to students at the class level, as well as in the job fairs. We worked with NACOG, both in their senior and youth programs. We talked to 519 people in interviews last year, as well as skills testing that we conducted. I pulled how many written communication events we did through our recruitment software. Jamie generated over 5,000 emails in talking to our external customers who were interested in joining our team, as well as took over 6,700 phone calls with people interested in joining our team. So we have been extremely busy with recruitment the past year. Also during that time, we implemented a full-day new employee orientation program. We went basically from a four-hour program to an eight-hour program, not quite eight hours, seven and a half. And with that, in the afternoon, we added an hour component that we're now talking to all of our new hires as they're onboard about code of conduct and respectful workplace behaviors, as well as an hour segment on safety and wellness initiatives, and encouraging folks to be more proactive in those areas and helping them right off the bat think about safety in the workplace, as well as a half an hour component from our IT manager to talk about laser fish and records retention and email and safety and those kind of things. We also implemented last year, with our recruitment software, a program they call onboarding. It was already part of the package, but it was a new tool that we implemented so that all of our new hires today remit to us their new hire paperwork electronically. So they're completing their W4s and their initial benefit paperwork online, and that has expedited our processing. Okay. Second component, our internal customers, our employees, they keep us busy too. We had, at the close of June, we had 278 people on payroll. So that includes not only our full and part-time employees that we were just discussing, but our seasonals as well. With that amount of individuals, last year, we processed over 800 personnel action forms, which is any kind of change to employees between us and payroll to communicate those changes. We took over 3,000 internal phone calls from our employees to help them with their benefit questions. Carolyn, with our wellness program and our wellness team, worked with 43 different benefit and wellness providers throughout our community in delivering over 30 educational programs, activities, events, seminars, and so forth. Some of the highlights from last year was our blood pressure campaign that ran for three months, was very successful. We partnered with the Safety Committee and Diane with a risk management training program that we had 64% of our employees participate in. United Way with the Warrior Challenge was also very popular last year, and we raised over $10,000 for United Way. And the health fair, of course, with 56% participation with employees. We also took care of 75 leave administration cases where employees were out for extended periods of time and helped them coordinate their benefits and assist them in returning back to work as quickly as possible. Of those 75 cases, 48 included worker compensation claims. From those 48 claims, we had three individuals with, only three individuals, with significant loss of work time, 177 days were lost last year because of work-related injuries. And with that, we continue to push safe personnel and OSHA training. We're working on two different programs right now that we're going to be rolling out next year, as well as triage now to provide employees immediate access to a registered nurse when they hurt themselves at work, so that they know whether first aid is appropriate or if they really need to see a doctor. And if they need to see a doctor, our annual set up that triage for them. And then last, as far as our productivity in Human Resources, is what I would say is just in the area of administration with our record retention efforts. We implemented as well last year, the new internet site. We took all of our Human Resources information from various server files, compiled it and put it into a user-friendly format online. So now employees can access that on the internet from any web browser, not only at work, but at home if they so choose to find that benefit form or whatever their need might be. Last year was our first year that we had our new Affordable Care Act reporting requirements to the IRS. So that was a lot of months of hard work to prepare and get that data to the IRS, and our first year went very successful, so we were happy about that. And through it all, we continue to work really hard to make sure HR staff is on top of their job knowledge so that we can perform those services to the best of our abilities. All my staff have participated in professional certification classes and webinars. We have one going-to-state conference this year. Carolyn completed OSHA training last year. She took over the Public Retirement Local Board activities from the police department, so she went under, underwent a lot of training for those responsibilities. And we've had a couple of difficult retirement cases that she's put a lot of time and energy the last year on. And Michelle has been busy at doing an interdepartmental shadowing program. Every month, she picks a different department and goes out and visits and shadows individuals so that she can really understand our internal customers and what we need to provide to them to support them as they need from us. So, that's what we've been up to. Questions?
Questions, anyone?
I don't have a question, but I do want to make a definite statement of the quality that I think you've brought to our HR department. And it's not taken lightly. I also want to comment that I'm vice chair for the Executive Committee of NACOG, and I've served on the governing board of, you have my guidance, there's our large employers. And we have become acutely aware that as the economy improves, we have a higher turnover, where prior to that, we didn't have such a turnover. So while these numbers might seem large, they are not necessarily out of dissatisfaction. Some of them just have an opportunity to move somewhere where they've always wanted to be.
Absolutely.
And I can't believe that that would be any different than yours. I think that one exception to that is probably the police department because, of course, we have our salaries that always cause our turnovers. But overall, I know our employees say to me on a regular basis how happy they are to be here, and they compliment you frequently, and I've never shared that with you.
Thank you.
Any other? Mary?
I don't know if you mentioned this, but what you do with the wellness program, did you mention that? And I missed it.
Oh, that we work with 43 benefit and wellness providers, and we delivered over 30 activities through the wellness program. We have a good 56% participation.
You do a fabulous job at that.
Thank you. You know, we just did new employee orientation with nine new police officers that are headed over to Academy. And they were all, they came in asking, "What do I need to do to participate in the wellness program?" So they had already heard about it from their department before we even had opportunity and orientation to tell them. So, it's been nice to see all departments become more responsive and engaged with the program.
Yeah, and that helps in everything, and you know, the time off and things like that, keeping up with your, you know, your wellness mentally, physically, all of that, you know? I have to tell you, you absolutely have the best wellness program that I have ever seen or experienced in my work.
Thank you.
Time over my years.
Wellness team has been doing a really great job. And two, since the judge is here, I want to give the judge kudos because whether he knows it or not, his ping-pong skills have made the police department sign up because they all want to be the judge. It's been great.
That's awesome.
We love it.
Thank you so much, Karen.
My pleasure.
Mike?
Yeah, I just had a question, it was something that Laura Lee brought up, in terms of factors that might contribute to the turnover. Is there one thing that kind of stands out, or is it just a combination of factors?
No, I really agree with Laura Lee that the bulk of it is simply with the recovery of the economy, that individuals had opportunity to make a change. And whether that change was employment-driven or family-driven, you know, during fiscal year 13, 14, where it was so high, many of them were like, "Now I can actually sell my house and get moved back wherever where my family is." And so that was a big driver. There is some retirement in that number. We talked about that even again today. We have been tracking that breakout. I haven't formalized it in a report process that I could break that number down of, well, how many were retirements voluntary or involuntary, though we do have that data. So there's some of that in there. Larry and I sit down with probably 95% of the exiting employees. We miss a few when they leave too quickly. But we sit down with almost everyone when they are leaving and have a good 20 to minute to 40 minutes sometime conversation about their experience while they were with us. And most are very pleased, sometimes as traditional, their supervisor conflicts. And so we work, you know, we take that information and we work to help supervision, understand what they could have maybe done better in those few examples. Once in a while, it's pay. But it doesn't seem to be the big driver. It's never benefits. They always love their benefits, and they always love their coworkers and the overall culture and environment here. But once in a while, it is a little bit of the money or a management conflict.
What, on the other side, is you think the biggest factor that brings people to the town as far as recruitment, new hires? Is there any particular thing that...
Yeah, well, you know, you heard the numbers there, you know, over, really, over 11,000 personal contacts with individuals in our community wanting to be part of our team. And I believe that we are looked at as a preferred employer throughout the community. People know that we might not always have the best salaries, but they're fair, and that they see a sense of stability with us, let alone that we have really good people. And can't tell you how many phone calls I take where individuals just tell me, "And by the way, can I tell you, everyone I deal with at the town are just top-notch," and they think a lot of our organization, and that spreads throughout our community. And our job candidates reflect that.
No, I agree. I think, I feel that the town as employees are very professional, and it's, I think, reflective in all the departments that we have internally that make our community great.
And we like to laugh. We have a good time around here. So, get our work done, but we enjoy each other's company while we are here.
I was curious too, do you, is there any online training that employees can impact, you know, get into or access?
Yes. All of our training for safety is an online forum. In fact, I took a phone message as I was coming over here this evening that one of our library employees just completed a one-hour online training in safety because they were working on a wellness component. So we have that, as well as through our employee assistance program, we have training modules there that are about an hour in length that they can take at their leisure. And people take advantage of both of those opportunities.
It sounds like you got everything covered, so.
Great.
We appreciate your leadership.
Sure.
Larry?
Yeah, just to reiterate what Karen said, when we do our exit interviews, 95% of the people are sad to leave. They like the organization, they like the people they work with, they like the good direction and the efficiencies that are all part of our team, if you will. And of that 95%, they're leaving for family reasons, and now they have an opportunity. And they're going back to where they came from, or they're going to be with elderly parents, or any number of things, or they have a spouse that's relocating, and they're sad to leave. And so that says a lot. But there's a great deal of mobility going on right now, that there's more money flowing through the economy, and people are able to sell their properties, or they see an opportunity in a different state or community to go to. So, we're providing a good workplace.
Certainly, as Laura Lee mentioned, nationally, 12% to 17% turnover rate is the norm today. So, it's not high as a national standard. We'd all love to see it lower and keep our good people, but understanding in today's economy, there's just a lot of movement.
Laura?
Eric, I would like to share something that I don't think you can. I've been aware that we have employees that have taken jobs here because of our work culture. And they actually, the same position in other areas, even locally, they could have made more money. But that's the reputation we have, and that's amazing.
Yeah, and their investment in our community, because quite frankly, most anyone in our organization could move to the Valley and make 10% to 20% more than they make here. But for quality of life in our community and our organization, they choose that.
Other questions, comments? Doing a great job, Karen.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
Uh-huh.
Okay, we move on to number eight, presentation magistrate court, Judge Keith Carter. Judge, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, each council member, and Larry and Diane, I hope tonight find you in excellent health. I'm sure you've been on the edges of your seats waiting for the numbers for the magistrate court.
Let me, let me check, yes. Vice Mayor, I'm still on the edge.
Hopefully, this doesn't push you off. All right, maybe you can get us ensconced a little better and not feel so much on the edge. So I understood you did want to know some numbers. Numbers just kind of alone don't necessarily help. I'm going to give you actually a comparison from the last fiscal year and then fiscal year 16. You can draw your own conclusions perhaps as to what they mean, but I'm giving them for some areas that I at least find some interest in. First of all, protective orders, there's three kinds: injunctions against harassment, order of protections, and workplace injunctions. Fiscal year 15, 277. Fiscal year 16, 239. These are people that walk in the door and say, "I'd like to apply for protective order." So, there is a little bit of a decrease on that. You can speculate, I don't have a good speculations, why not? I'd like to see, maybe see that people are getting along better, I'm not sure. Next would be theft, which would include shoplifting. With Walmart opening, the court experienced just an incredible increase in shoplifting. I've since concluded that Walmart has perhaps one of the best security systems employed, and they do obviously an exceptional job. Shoplifting's actually decreased from 493 to 400. You all know that we did lose two big box stores, that may reflect in the figures, I'm not sure. Drug cases filed in the court, possession of marijuana, possession of paraphernalia, those would be the typical drug charges. Those actually increased from 275 to 374 by 99. The DUIs filed, and understand, the filings are per charge. So, what I'm going to tell you here, 391 filings, that doesn't mean we have 391 different people. A single individual can get as many as four DUI charges out of one driving incident, impaired to the slightest, blowing .08, blowing .15, blowing .20. They can only get sentenced for one, but they are, depending on how high they blew and the driving, there could actually be four. The DUIs increased from 338 to 391. One of our biggest categories, largest numbers, is just called civil traffic. Civil traffic increased a little bit from 2,869 to 2,990. And then, search warrants, these are always favorite to me because these are what I can get woke up for at midnight and 1:00 a.m. and so forth, and by different agencies. PANT does it, Prescott actually does it. They have their judge, a number of pro temps, yet I occasionally get calls, "We can't reach any of those." But they reach me, and that's fine with me, because I'm happy to be of service in that regard. Sir? in that regard. Search warrants increased from 81 to 92. So that's kind of an overview of some areas. If you add all the filings together from fiscal year 2015 to fiscal year 16, the total actually dropped slightly. It went from 6,583 to 6,314. Just briefly in regard to the court's schedule, Tuesdays and Thursday mornings, we have pretrial conferences, change of pleas, the prosecutors there for defendants to deal with that. Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, we have trials. Those are typically the shorter trials. On Wednesday, all day long, our arraignments. And then Monday and Fridays are reserved for longer trials and jury trials. And of course, paperwork, paperwork, paperwork all week long. So hopefully that either pushed you off your chair or got you sitting back in the chair. Any questions?
Questions, Laura?
I would like to know if you believe the protection decrease couldn't be to the outstanding domestic violence unit that all the hard work that our police department's doing.
That is certainly something that's very active, and that may well be a factor.
Yeah, I hope so because that's a goal.
Other questions? Mike?
Yeah, I had a question. We had talked, I think, before when we had presentations, the number of warrants, I think you mentioned around 5,000 or so. And I know there's a distinction between warrants. And what I always look at is when I look at the the police log, there are warrants, you know, that come from not only the town, but other places, other municipalities. How long are those warrants good for? And then do they they kind of peak and valley in terms of numbers over time?
The numbers have generally just increased every year.
Really?
As a net, certainly people get arrested, but then we issue more. And so what happens is they get arrested in other jurisdictions, and then typically there's an agreement with sheriff's office to bring them to court. Though if they get arrested down in the valley, occasionally, I understand, I'm not directly involved, sheriff's office sometimes can't make the arrangements to get them here. So but yes, there are a lot of outstanding warrants because people don't show up. And so that's sometimes the only method that's available to try to deal with it. Well, I should say it's one of the methods. Another method for some who already owe money, we send them to the Supreme Court collections provider. That's done. So there are a few things, but warrants seem to get a lot of people's attention. And I sometimes ask people, how did you find about this warrant? Well, I look online under my name. And I'm like, okay, that's that's fair enough. And then they come in without getting arrested. And if they voluntarily come in, then what I do is I don't, you know, some courts would say, okay, we'll call the police and take you to jail. Well, no, I want to reward them for coming in without utilizing the police department and things of that nature, sheriff's department. So I will say, all right, I'll quash the warrant. And now let's deal with the issue of why I issued the warrant in the first place. And the number, I think, is between 1,500 and 2,000.
Okay, great. Yeah. Is there a time limit on?
The time, sometimes people talk in terms of five years, though I have warrants outstanding for at least double that. I'm not been presented with any information that indicates at five years, I actually have to cancel the warrant. So at least at this point, I'm just leaving them in effect. Certainly, if at some point I'm told I've got to cancel them, then that's what I will do. But I've not been advised of that, at least at this point. And if you do something for 18 years one way, you know, and my predecessor predecessor did it, then, you know, usually I'll just keep doing that unless I'm advised that I just can't do that. So.
Great information. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Judge, again, doing a good job.
All right. Thank you very much. And thanks for the time to talk with you.
Okay, everybody's sitting on the edge of their chairs. Number nine, Presentation, Library, Stuart Matson.
I appreciate that comment after the start of the state library and the records information. I do want to acknowledge that two of the board members, Corey and Kathy, are here to support us. And I want you to know to help Karen's turnover rate. I just celebrated 29 years, so I am not part of that number. I just have some numbers about the activity that the library experienced last year that I think you might be interested in. We have about 21,761 registered patrons. That what we also did for this presentation, I based, I looked at the figures I'm going to talk about and and the goals that we had in the budget book to see how well we did. New patrons we registered, 3,264. And we that gave us 96 more than what our goal was. Total circulation was 404,340. We went down on that one. We were 9,272 short of what that goal was. New materials that we added to the collection, you know, my favorite discussion, 7,728, which was 595 over our goal. Our total collection, if you wanted to know the size of our collection, is 103,915 items. Door count, which is, I think, says a lot. We had 267,503 door count, and that was 12,726 over our goal. Going on to some of the other things on our programs, I'm so proud, and you've all mentioned all the wonderful programs, and a lot of the success of that was, of course, they were grants. And that gave us some base and some funding. And so there were 17 cultural events that were held through the grant funded. They were attended by 944 patrons and guests. And 33% of the people that responded, which was 314, were had never been PVPL patrons. So that was getting new people in into the library. The Digital Media Lab also had an increase. They had 12 workshops and they had 70 participants, which that was funded through the NCU donation. 38% increase in attendance of those adult programs, which we are as best we can do with the funding that we are trying to find in our budget to continue some of those things. For example, they do the movies. We paid for the movie license so that we can still do movies here in the auditorium. We're starting to ramp up more employee development because during the downtime, that was wiped out. And so we're doing more of that. Larry was very gracious in, we had, we have not really had a lot of staff retreats. We had a retreat when we started to open again on Mondays, which was very valuable. But this last year, we had a two day, we had to divide the staff so that we could have the retreat and still be open. And that really helped the staff. Casey Van Heren and Michelle Yortin were able to go to the Public Library Conference in Denver this year. And then Ted and Casey Van Heren were at the Arizona State Arizona Library Association Conference and Flagstaff, and they were presenting. And so this year, we're trying to get more of the staff to be able to go to at least to the Arizona State Conference. And of course, the friends are also budgeting some of their money to help send these people. And then throughout the year, many staff did areas completed with online webinars, which you've already heard one that Karen talked about. So any questions about my numbers?
Marty?
Yeah, I know that you recently added a meeting room in the front with the Glassford Room, and you've moved the newspapers and periodicals somewhere else. How is that working out for you?
You know, it, once again, that we discovered after we've been in the building going on seven years, that that size room was something that we really needed. And, excuse me? Don't fall off the seat. Anyway, I was a little concerned about the fallout for the magazine and newspaper people because a lot of those are daily. And that's a little further than they were used to. And I did get a little, but now, I think in the end, it's a much better place upstairs. I think we try to have that side of the building as the area where people could work, which they do daily, same people every day. They're on the tables out there, working with their laptops. So it's relatively quiet until Ted gets there. And then, so I think in the end, it's a better place for the magazines. But the space itself is being used more and more and more by all kinds of different groups because it holds about 20, and that's about the size that we were lacking. So.
And regarding that room, is there a fee if somebody wants to use it? Or is just they have to place a reservation?
Right. They just call us. We've looked at some some guidelines there. First of all, we want to make sure it's open to everybody. And of course, it can't be anything where there's a charge. And so we're trying to just make it not so difficult for some groups to have a place to go and meet. There's all different kinds of groups that are, and of course, a little bit of fallout because of Prescott Public's issue with having to start to charge. Hasn't been a huge impact, but I think it'll continue as that becomes an issue in there.
And just in case anybody's watching, if someone, if a group wants to meet in that room, are they allowed to bring in any food or beverages?
Water and some snacks, but beyond that, we don't, you know, get into lunches in there or anything like that.
Laura?
These numbers tell me that our library is alive and well in an area in a period of time when we're told libraries are dying.
Did Larry say that? Did he put you up for that?
What do you attribute that to, sir?
I really feel it's, for this last year, it was the programs and the quantity and the quality of programs. I mean, several times, we filled this auditorium with the different programs. I still think that as we have historically, we still get the people that come every day to use the public computers. And and that's wonderful because we're giving them that availability that they evidently, you know, do not have in their in their homes. And, you know, I think the word is getting out more that we're even here and so on. So I think it's a combination, but I really do think the programs have really helped.
I'm aware that we are seeing people from Prescott here because I've bumped into them. And that's quite a testament to you and your staff and what you're providing here and how important it is for it to be here. So I just want to thank you on behalf of those 21,761 regular patrons.
Well, as I think I emailed you, I had a gentleman when I was at reference that complimented the council for going ahead and really doing this, this building, this facility. And he didn't, you know, bash Prescott Public, but he was definitely saying he was very impressed and specifically said to thank the council.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to make a comment about your library board. Every single time you're in here for any kind of event, some of your board is present with you, and I want to commend them for that.
I really appreciate that, too. In fact, we've been doing at the board meetings, the American Library Association have what they call short takes for trustees, and it's a little video clip. And I was very happy and proud to know that they said that these kinds of things, they need to be there. And they all would want to be here. Not everybody can do it all the time. But I am proud and I thank you for that.
It really means a lot to me to see them here. Thank you.
Mary?
Well, you know, Rick just said it, so he beat me to it. But that's exactly what I was going to say. I am just so impressed with our with the board members and the support that they give our town. And I do want to thank you. The interest that you give means a lot. And you do a fabulous job, just a fabulous job, Stuart. The community really uses this library. I come in here periodically, Kirk and I do. And, you know, it's always full. It's very active. There's activities going on all over the place, you know, people using the rooms, having meetings and everything. And and it's a wonderful place. It's a great place to meet and to communicate and talk to each other. I mean, like, look at each other and talk to each other. It's fabulous. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mike?
Yeah, I just had a kind of a basic question. You still have library cards, I assume?
Yes, we do. That was the one statistic. I forgot where I think we were at, where we issued. 3,264 for this last year.
Does that expire? Do they expire?
Only because of Corey. No, if they're not used after two years, then they're purged from the database mainly because of the space.
Right.
And but we still would reissue. I've had people come in and they go, you know, I try to help them and I scan their card and it's not, and I said, well, you can still make it good.
Sure.
And just go downstairs and they can do that.
Yeah, I know. It's very easy to do that. And I was just wondering if it's still the same process.
I think we've determined that Councilman Whiting does not have a library card.
I do have a library card, but it's old. It's a yellow one, I think.
I have the yellow one. In fact, my yellow one is the third one we ever issued when we went online. It'll be probably in the Historical Society someday. But you can make that good. Just bring it in and do that.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Steve? No comment?
Okay.
Any other comments? Board members want to make any comments?
Come on up and use.
Come on up, Corey. While he's coming, I just want to say that our library is a point of pride in this community.
Thank you, members of the council. One thing I would like to say is that we have an extremely aggressive policy for purging, purging patrons that haven't used the system in a while. And when you take a look at the number of patrons we have, those are really active patrons. These aren't people that have been sitting around in the system for 10 years and have never used it. These are people that are coming in weekly, daily, monthly. So when he gives you that number of 21,000, those are real active library users. So that's a really good thing.
And I see them coming and going with bags full. They don't come in and get one or two items.
Well, what I'd like to also add to Mary's comment, what I'm very proud of is we could have a lot of people, but it's not crowded. They don't have to wait for computers. And they usually don't have to wait to check items out. And that's something I'm really proud of, too. Thanks.
Kathy, any comments?
I'm just happy.
No, you have to use a makeup.
I'm just saying.
No, you have to use a makeup.
I'm just saying, I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. We're glad to have you. Okay. And Stuart, keep up the good work, okay? Okay, then we go on to Presentation, Community Development Permit Volume and Development Trends, Richard Parker. Mr. Parker, you're up and welcome.
So grateful to stand in front of you and and talk a little bit about what we're doing volume wise and community development, some development trends that we're seeing that result from changes in the economy that you've heard over and over about. The comment about people moving into other jobs really is relevant in community development because a lot of the inspectors and the people who deal in permitting have taken advantage of the private sector where they came from originally when the economy crashed. And I think we spoke in some length, just right in the middle of the recession, about the trends that we saw. First, the residential stuff falling off, and then the multiple family stuff falling off, and then commercial. And now it's come full circle back. The residential stuff is very healthy. The multiple family vacancies are non-existent to the extent that the new Economic Development Director is moving in, I understand, with Larry Tarkowski in his basement, because he can't find a place to live. And that has now spawned a need for additional apartments. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, over the course of the next couple of months, will be looking at no less than five large apartment projects. And why is because the economy is booming and people are needing places to live because they're coming here to work, which is a really good statistic. The illustration that's up before you there shows the The illustration that's up before you there shows the rise in volume of permits from eleven, twelve, which was kind of a low period, up to fifteen, sixteen. Putting that in perspective, those figures for single-family residential development are about a third less than the all-time high that we saw in the two thousand three, four, and five period of time. So we're back to a very robust permit volume for single-family residential development. In talking with many of the developers, and I do that a lot, there still is a problem with skilled trades. There is a huge market to the extent that there are waiting lists for many of the projects that are hundreds of persons long that would like to move into a house, and one of the developers I work with for Granville tells me that they cut that number off at a hundred and fifty because he can't build enough houses to try to meet that demand and try to price it suitably in today's market for a market that may be a year out. So he's elected to keep that at a hundred and fifty, and I would submit to you folks that that is a good thing. And as you might expect, the number of total permits that we issue, which are both commercial tenant improvements and residential development, has gone up by about fifty percent, and I think that again speaks volumes to the fact that the economy is recovering and you're seeing new businesses move into the community and seek those kind of services. Last comparison, and I like green when I'm trying to tell a good story. The green line shows the number of initial project reviews that we deal with monthly. And if you know, I'm sure you do know, and for those at home, we provide a service to people who want to come to either work, open a business, do something like that in the town of Prescott Valley, build a large apartment project or a commercial project, and they're given an opportunity to interface with staff free of charge on a very quick turnaround one week, and they bring those forward through the initial project review process. It costs them nothing other than their time. And you can see the numbers that we're seeing, which again, I think, points to the fact that we're having people, more businesses move in, people wanting to do business here in the town of Prescott Valley. It's the job of the Community Development Department to make sure that we facilitate their needs. We try to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish, given the morass of public regulations that we administer, and we try to help them through the process, help them be successful in their endeavors, whether it be building a house or opening a new business in the town of Prescott Valley. And I would submit to you that that's an unusual approach to providing community development services for most jurisdictions. Couple things on the horizon quickly. The town has worked now cooperatively with the region to have everybody on the same page as it relates to the codes that we administer. We are all now including Dewey-Humboldt on the two thousand and twelve international code. Prescott Valley was the first one that took action towards bringing those codes forward, and you adopted those codes within the last fiscal year. Likewise, we've worked now closely with Yavapai County, the Chino, Town of Chino Valley, and maybe Dewey-Humboldt in trying to move to the same software and have that software administered by Yavapai County so we don't burden our current GIS or our current management services, folks. And that would be hosted by the county, maintained by the county, and we'd all be on the same page. So the boundaries that we currently have, where we all keep track of statistical information based on our corporate boundaries or the size of Yavapai County would no longer matter. You could draw a line anywhere you wanted to draw a line and statistically portray what's going on within that area. Likewise, and from my vantage point as the director, I'd like to be able to see for Larry, because he's always asking questions, what it would be like if we annexed these areas in terms of the volumes that we're seeing presently in building as an example. Presently, if we look at Yavapai County, I have to try to interface with a different software that makes no sense to me. And likewise, Chino Valley interfaces with a software that doesn't make any sense to me. That's probably why I don't work there. But then in turn, they're now all coming to the same platform that we currently support in the town of Prescott Valley. So we'd all be speaking the same language, which would be a very helpful thing. And when somebody comes in to get a permit, we hope, in Yavapai County, it'll be the same kind of process that it will be in the town of Prescott Valley, though I think we'll do it better. But it'll be the same kind of process that you do in Dewey-Humboldt or the same kind of process that you do in Chino Valley. We have written a grant application through FEMA which could sponsor the entire effort, and another regional participant, our sister city to the, to the west, has indicated their willingness to participate if we secure that grant. If we don't secure that grant, I don't think that they're going to participate. However, at some point during this fiscal year, I'm going to be getting with Larry and trying to present a approach to be able to maintain technologies into the future. Yavapai County currently charges a technology fee based on the size or magnitude of the application that comes in. We're looking at a variety of other opportunities to be able to do that, but putting in, and again, the context of the town of Prescott Valley, coincidentally, Larry and I were meeting with a developer earlier this week, and he made a statement that we have the highest fees in the quad-city areas, or he was comparing us to another jurisdiction. Fortunately, I had met earlier with my county counterpart, and they're proposing to increase their fees for services all the way across the board, and they produced a listing of the cost for building safety fees, which are plan check and actually issuing a permit. Lo and behold, in northern Arizona, the cheapest place to buy, to build a house and buy your construction permit is Prescott Valley by a lot. And I'd be happy to share that with you, and I think it's important because I think we need to normalize fees. Talking with Yavapai County, they would like to approach this on a more regional basis to where they can continue to provide those services to other communities that reside within the sea that I call Yavapai County. Those are a few things that are on our plate. We have a whole bunch of applications stacked up that are coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then, as you know, ultimately to you over the course of their maturity. With that, I'd respond to any questions you may have.
Mike?
Well, I do have a comment. I think some of the presentations we've had in the past several months is kind of interesting once we hear comments in the community in reaction to various issues that pop up. And one is, you know, I think I've been blown away in the fact that the planned communities we have were all pretty much presented and approved back in, what, ninety-eight, ninety-nine. We're seeing this slow build-out as time goes on and the impact that has on our resources. And it, you know, it's obvious to me, anyway, that the town of Prescott Valley is very well-prepared to respond to those needs in the community, and it, I guess it's a whole gamut as far as water use and amount of people in our community, the use of our infrastructure in terms of roads and other things. And I think we're in a very good position where, you know, I think we're talking about one of the candidate forms of our, our two thousand and twenty-five plan, that we're looking at a seventy or seventy-five thousand population as our, our peak population at this point in that plan, right?
That's correct.
So I think we're well-positioned to really respond to those things, and I think we were looking at the fact that our water use, as an example, is actually going down in terms of per capita use. So I think we've done all the right things, you know, to, to look to a bright future in Prescott Valley, so I just thought I'd mention that.
Couple, couple of quick thoughts that just jumped into my brain. I often tell you that I enjoy what I do here, and it's because it's sanity. Many people who do the same thing in other jurisdictions go crazier than I am a lot sooner. And that's purely because the systems that are in place here make sense. They are something that if you follow the process, you abide by the code, you develop consistently with a plan that's a public document, the likelihood of your success is very great. That's not the case in many other jurisdictions. And I submit again to you that that's a reason why some of the people that have invested in Prescott Valley have elected to spend their money here as opposed to someplace else in the quad cities, because there's some certainty as to outcome based on the process, and that's a very healthy thing to do. The other thing I'm very proud of is we've got a building safety division, and you've interacted with people throughout community development. I think that they're mostly pretty nice, but beyond that, they are very responsive to getting something done, and they go out in case of building safety. You call before seven o'clock in the morning, you'll have your inspection that day. There's no other jurisdiction that does that in the quad cities. There's no other jurisdiction that I'm aware of in Arizona that does that. And that's service, folks, at least in my business. That's a high level of service. You call the Community Development Department, they will answer the telephone, without a doubt, they will answer the telephone, and I'm very proud of that. That's again called customer service.
Marty?
Yeah, regarding your customer service, I know, having had some contractors stand before us and speaking to some just in general, they always have a pleasant experience in working with our permit department, and the fact that if there's something wrong with the permit, we don't just arbitrarily reject it, we tell them how they could correct it, and we make the process, as you keep pointing out, much easier for them. So they're not doing it by themselves, they're getting some assistance from us, from our experience and our professional knowledge, and I think that goes a long way to getting the businesses here and permits here and, you know, keeping it, you know, and then they want to invest and do some more business here. So I think that's great, and it's due to, you know, your department and how well they do things. So thank you very much for that.
Laura?
I want to make sure that you know about this, and I want our TV audience to know. The Chamber gave out awards on Friday, and Big Dealer Little Prices was one of the award winners. They got up and they praised your department in the highest of complimentary terms and made the statement, "We don't get this quality assistance and treatment anywhere else." And as everybody knows, they have businesses all over. That's the best commercial for your department I have ever heard, and I wanted to stand up and cheer, but I behave myself.
And I appreciate the kudos, but the other thing is, I get clear direction from you, clear direction from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Larry and I speak Greek to each other often, but we still seem to get the job done. But again, that's unusual. You've expressed through your plan document a very detailed explanation of what you want to see as this community grows, and it's a privilege, and it certainly is a lot better than the alternative for me to say, yeah, this is consistent or congruent to your plan, folks, let's move forward, and be able to communicate that you have a reasonable expectation of success if you do things that we want to have happen. And that's a good example with Little Dealer Little Prices.
We're being accused as a council of being lapdogs at our community forums, so thank you, all of the staff before you, who commented about the healthy partnership that we all have as a community, because it takes all of us working together. And we have success, and I'm so joyful about that.
Larry?
I would go ahead and submit that actually, rather than partnership, it's a team, a team of staff, team of elected officials, and a team with the whole community. And Councilman Whiting was talking about water resources, and that, that issue apparently had been expressed to you. I would suggest to you that the American Public Works Association, two years ago, had a very good statement, and that is, "Build for today, plan for tomorrow." And that's what we're doing. When we bought water resources, when we partnered with City of Prescott back in two thousand and four, had it not been for the recession, we would already be using that water that needs to be imported from the big Chino. But we purchased a ranch that has the water resources for the future, and so we continue to do that. And part of the overwhelming success the town of Prescott Valley has had is because of vision and elected officials that have embraced the vision as articulated by the general plan. And so all of those elements mean that we keep stepping forward, and quite frankly, you've got a document that says, and the voters approved it, what they want this community to look like in two thousand and thirty, and we just keep working our way that way. No surprises, it's just what we do.
Good. Any other comments? Richard? Good job. Appreciate that. Okay, I think that is it. We're going to say the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Kirk, good to see you.